This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 3rd, 2018, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, on January 3rd, 2018, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. Please speak into the microphone if you come up to speak. And assistive listening devices are available. Debbie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Beryl Mittler?
Here.
Councilwoman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilman Hale?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Borough Administrator?
Here.
Okay. So we're going to go into a brief discussion. I've got many phone calls and emails about the constant water flushing of our fire pumps, and I've asked the folks from Middlesex Water to come in and give us an idea of what's going on, what that means, is the water safe, et cetera. So, gentlemen, if you don't mind?
Mayor, would you like us to speak from here?
There's a microphone right there. Thank you.
Sorry, we're a little unfamiliar with how you guys do this.
Okay. So just before they start, I want you to understand that we buy our water from Middlesex Water Company. We own the pipes that go underground that deliver the water to us, okay?
Hello, folks. Is it working?
Yeah.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Bob Fulger. I work for Middlesex Water Company. I'm the Director of Distribution there. I've been involved with the Borough Highland Park, almost probably close to 15 years now, ever since John Davino retired. Been the license operator. I'm still involved on a day-to-day basis. I have with me here tonight David Brogel. He's our Director of Production and works at our water treatment plant. And Jan Tradoschuk, he's our Superintendent of Distribution, Maintenance, and Construction back at Middlesex Water Company. He is currently your license operator here for the borough. The mayor asked us to come in and speak to everyone about, as she said, the questions about why we're flushing the hydrants, and you see that going on. To give a little background, Dave is our water quality expert, so I'm going to put him on the spot a little bit and ask him to just give you a brief explanation of why we do things and why you're seeing what you're seeing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you for having us here tonight. Just want to give a little background. I work at the CJO Treatment Plant, which is in Edison, which supplies all the water that goes to Highland Park. So I'm going to give a little background, and maybe this will answer some of the questions that you're having. So we get water from the Delaware Rarity Canal, so that water comes all the way from the Delaware River, crosses the state, and comes over to our treatment plant. So as it goes into our treatment plant, we need to treat the water to take out all the bacteria and viruses, so we add chlorine to the water. Now, also in the water is natural organic material that's picked up along the way, and so when that reacts with the chlorine, you form disinfection byproducts. And there are certain requirements the federal government has on how much can be in the water. So what happens is the chlorine will react with the organics, the disinfectant byproducts, and over time, it gets more and more. So what you want to do is either limit the amount of time that it reacts with, or you want to treat the water a little differently, remove more of the organics. Right now, our plant can only remove so much. So when we get rainstorms, you get a lot of runoff, and there's organics in the water, it's from streams that enter the canal, and that comes into the plant. And if, once the higher levels come in, you get the higher byproducts. So right now, the way we can mitigate that is to shorten the amount of time that it's in the pipes, and that's why we flush. So when we get these rainstorms and the higher organics come into the plant, I let Jan know, and he'll let Don know that we should be flushing when we hit a certain level. Once that's gone, then we'll turn off the flushing and go back to normal. Right now, we have a project in Middlesex. We're looking to put ozone at the plant, which will reduce the organics before they come out of the plant, and that way flushing will not be necessary anymore. But that's not going to be completed until 2021. We're just starting construction now, and hopefully that'll go well. And I don't know if anybody else has any questions on that.
What is ozone?
It's a different way to disinfect the water. Right now, we use chlorine to disinfect. The ozone is a better oxidant, so it takes those organics and makes them easier to remove in the plant. So then we need less chlorine, because you have to add chlorine anyway leaving the plant to keep a little disinfectant residual in the water to prevent any regrowth in the system.
Or what are organics?
Like from leaves and trees decaying and water. It sits in water, and you get these different organics that form coming out of the-
So it's dirt, waste, trees?
Yeah. It's a combination of everything.
Affluent?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Not so much, I wouldn't say affluent, not so much affluent.
No, there's no any kind of wastewater that goes into the canal.
Okay.
It's more, it's natural organics. It's just in there.
Our drinking water that we all consume in the Middlesex system and in the borough comes from the Delaware River. Our pump station is over in New Brunswick, and we pump out the canal, we pump it up to our treatment plant in Edison, and that's where the water's treated and then pumped out to the system.
I have a question. How often do you do the flushing? Because we've seen the flushing, and that's really a big concern, and with the price of water and everything else, so that's what is a main driver for the concern. So how often do you have to flush? Is it only when you have heavy rain downpours that you flush? Or there's a mandatory required time of year that you have to flush? How many times?
There is some science to that, and that's what Dave's doing.
Yeah, we monitor the water quality coming into the plant and leaving the plant. So when we hit, we measure the organics in the water. So when it hits a certain level coming out of the plant, and it's a little too high, then I let Jan know that we need to flush. And the reason you're seeing more flushing this year is we've had a lot more rain events. This year's been one of the rainier years, so that's why you're seeing it more than in past years. Now, this all came about because in 2016, we had a problem with some disinfection byproducts. So one of the mitigation that we agreed to do with the state was to do this flushing based on the level of organics coming out of the plant. And you haven't had any, we haven't had any problems since we've done the flushing.
And I see-
Well, when you form disinfection byproducts, you need organics, you need the chlorine, time, and temperature. So the warmer temperature, they form more and faster.
And I see that our public information officer has a question. Could you, could you, thank you.
I just want to follow up on two things that you mentioned, if I could.
Harry, you have to hold the close to you mouth.
How's that?
Better?
Better? Okay. I want to follow up on two things you mentioned, because we're hearing from residents about this. One is, did you mention that the state has mandated this? That there's new state requirements?
No, they didn't mandate this, but they want you to locate your system and why you're getting the high disinfection byproducts, and what you can do to mitigate that. So when in the short term, it's going to be flushing until we can get our plant online.
Okay.
Now, the THN, the disinfectant byproduct levels have decreased over the years.
Well, I mean, I don't know the detail on what goes in that. I guess 10, 15 years ago, there used to be, that you could average all the different sites to come up with a number, and that would be your regulatory number. Then they lowered it, and then they went to this, what they call, local running annual average, where each site had its own regulatory requirement. So what you do is you had to go into your system and find the places with the highest numbers. So if you keep those places that have the longest residence time below the level, then you know everything else is good.
And in the summer?
In summary, the regulations and the levels for disinfection byproducts became more stringent. So it became harder to meet those levels. The water in the canal hasn't changed, the organics haven't changed, and chlorine hasn't changed. It's been the same for over 100 years.
When did those standards-
I think 2011, 2012.
Because the second thing I wanted to ask, like, well-
Yes.
Residents are noticing and commenting on social media and in other ways that it just seems like we're flushing a lot. In my observation, it seems like we're flushing almost nearly after every rain. Is that your experience? I mean, irrespective of volume or intensity of the rain, it just seems like if there's a rain event of any significance, there's flushing afterwards.
Usually, it's not every rain event. Over an inch is usually when we start having the issue, if you get over inch of rain. And it doesn't have to be here. It could be over towards the canal, because the canal runs all the way to the west side of New Jersey, so it could be anywhere along there. So, right, even if it's not local.
It could be raining out in Trenton, it could, you know, miles from here, and within a couple days, we will see that impact in the canal.
Okay. Well, I thank you very much for coming in, because there's no way we could have explained that. In fact, we had probably most of the questions tonight. So I thank you very much, gentlemen, and we look forward to continuing our work with you.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to introduce you to the town as the people that we meet with on a regular basis. Terry and I have our pretty standard, once-a-month coffee meeting early in the morning with these gentlemen who have been working with us for well over two years to solve all of our water problems. And I can't think of another bunch of an industry who've done more for us. Everything from helping us plan to even submitting plans to reduce mandatory sales levels with the DEP. They're very, very helpful, very, very knowledgeable, and they do, as a member of the Canal Watch and a cyclist who goes from here to Lambertville on the trail, used to do it at least once a month, I don't anymore. The area that you deal with, you may think of the canal right here along Johnson's Park, but it actually runs in the industrial area in Trenton, it runs underground, it runs through the farmlands and the sour land. And that's, when they're talking about organics, they're talking about 60 miles of trail and everything from urban environment to some of our more beautiful farmlands in central Jersey, and it is quite a task. The canal monitors as well, and if you know the canal, it is a very rich and biodiverse area. When it reaches your pumps, that has to change. Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. We're happy to come back anytime you'd like to have us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to council reports, and I am going to start on my left today. Councilwoman Foster Dublin, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Mayor. I'm going to start off first with our police blotter information. And last month, there was a total of 1,610 calls for service, and I'm just going to highlight the largest numbers. For example, we had 79 ambulance calls, we had eight burglaries, 11 missed trip call, CDS was six, disorderly person three, disputes was 24, harassment calls was 16, missing person unfortunately was seven, and motor vehicles was 37, a very high number of motor vehicle accidents that we have seen. We have seen theft on an increase, it's been 15, and at this point, I would like to question everyone to please close your car doors, please lock your doors at your home, and just be mindful that, don't leave your computer equipment, or leave your doors, your car doors unlocked. I know people get complacent and get comfortable, and they oftentimes do this, but if you've been watching the news lately, there has been a large uptick of people leaving their cars unlocked and people breaking in. So let's try to avoid some of that and lock up your personal belongings. We had one trespassing call, welfare adult checks, we had 19, and we had nine arrests and five warrants. So that was what was on our police blotter that kept the police department busy that last month. On that note, I would also like to say, public safety note again, is to, I saw this news report where kids are playing in the leaves, and I would like to encourage everyone not to have the children lay down in the leaves and play, because there was a UPS truck that went to deliver something, and luckily, the guy did not drive close to the sidewalk, because the kids were playing in the leaves, and the kids would have gotten run over. So the leaves are coming down, it's tempting for everyone to play within the leaves, but try to have your kids not play in, because it could have been something fatal that happened. So just be mindful of that. Another public safety note is that the weather has changed, that the season is darker, and we're asking people to please utilize the sidewalks and not walk in the streets, especially people who are wearing dark clothing, they're not easily seen this time of year, so please utilize the sidewalk as you go about your day to day. On another note, many of you may have seen the recent news report that came out, and it talked about the racial profiling or racial balance in Highland Park as it pertains to our police department. There was a news article that came out in the newspaper, and we have looked at it very carefully. We will continue to look at it, and we want to address the issues that was brought up in that article. We have been taking many steps to address issues that come our way and that we're aware of. And I'm personally disheartened that it came out like that, but I'm not saying that this is all factual. Some work needs to be done. We need to delve deeper into the material that came out, because I personally pride myself as working really hard and changing the culture that, when I came to Highland Park, that was here, and I believe that we did a great job in doing so. So again, we need to do some more self-examination and to look at where we are. And so with that said, that council member Matt Hale, the mayor and myself have been looking at ways of how do we address our issues here in town? And one of the things that Councilmember Hale has done is to put together a biased task force, a biased commission. And that, I'm going to let him explain a little bit in detail about what that entails as it goes, as we look, we reexamine ourselves and see where we are, and how do we improve on what we have accomplished so far. Councilmember Hale?
Thank you very much. As Councilwoman Foster Dublin said, we've been meeting with a group in Highland Park for quite some time, from the Bias-Free Organization in Highland Park, that is focused very strongly and very connected with understanding what is going on in terms of racial bias, racial profiling, and issues of race within Highland Park. Tonight, we're, and part of our first reading agenda will be the creation of a Bias-Free Commission. And we're very happy to be working with the Bias-Free Group. Particularly, I wanted to recognize Sonia Hedlam, Lucinda Holt, Sheila Shakar, Julie Luck, and Justin Burton, who are some residents who have taken sort of the lead on this. One of the things in these discussions that was evident, and is evident also very clearly through this most recent Use of Force Report, is that there are issues that we need to deal with as a community regarding racial bias, both internally of the organization of government, but externally within the residents of Highland Park. It's not something that you can sort of wave a wand, do a program, and call it a day. It is something that needs to be first and foremost and front row and center in how we interact and how we work together. And that's the purpose of this commission. The purpose of this Bias-Free Commission is to focus specifically on what are the issues that we are facing as a community as it regards, in regards to race. Ideally, this commission will look and provide reports on a regular basis on a wide-ranging aspects of the community. Our intent is to shine a light on these issues wherever that light leads us, and I think that this commission is a great first step in that. We've designed it in a way that it will work very, very closely with our existing Human Relations Commission. The Human Relations Commission has historically done a fantastic job, I think, of raising a variety of issues beyond racial issues, but I think all sorts of social justice issues, and we hope that it'll continue to do that. So it's opportune that this Bias-Free Commission is coming at the same time that this Use of Force Report is coming out. We have been working on this issue significantly for quite some time, and the formation of this commission, the formation of this focus, the people working on it, I think are going to lead to some good things for Highland Park.
Thank you.
So that'll be in the agenda for later tonight, and so that's where we're at.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for explaining some more, because we have been working in tandem to get this done as we look at how we, how everything comes together, because on the council, we work in different committees and teams, and this overlap with public safety, that's why Councilmember Hale was brought in to help to take a look at this, and the Bias-Free Commission, I'm looking forward to what they'll find out. As many of you may remember, a number of years, we did a report to take a look at how we relate in Highland Park, and that was over 15 years ago. So it's due, it's time for us to reexamine ourselves and to see how we can improve and everything that we have accomplished and we need to improve upon as we move forward. So I think it's timely and it's right for us to be taking that second phase and a second look at ourselves and see what more can we do to improve our relations with our police department, with our community, and each and every one of us. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Fine?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, as the Chair of the Finance Standing Committee, I would like to discuss shared services, and I would also like to address the current crisis of antisemitism in America. As to shared services, our borough has established various shared services over the past decade, such as sharing a housing authority executive director with Woodbridge, animal control with Edison, and a senior health officer with Middlesex County. But there are additional opportunities for shared services with other municipalities and county agencies that I believe we should explore that may provide savings for Highland Park without negatively impacting the quality of life of our residents. At our October 23rd council meeting, I indicated that we will continue to explore such opportunities, and we have started to do so. In May of this year, Governor Murphy named Nicholas Platt, former mayor of Harding, and Jordan Glat, former mayor of Summit, as New Jersey's Shared Services czars to help New Jersey municipalities reduce budgets and stabilize property taxes by implementing shared service agreements with other municipalities and county agencies. On November 28th, I had the pleasure, along with the mayor and borough administrator, of meeting with the Shared Services czars to discuss possible shared services opportunities for Highland Park. And as a result of our meeting, a more extensive meeting has been scheduled with other Middlesex County mayors and the Shared Services czars, which will take place in Highland Park on December 17th. As always, we remain committed to exploring ways to stabilize the municipal portion of Highland Park's residents' property taxes. I'd also like to take just a few moments to address the crisis of antisemitism in America today, and yes, antisemitism in America today is a crisis. In February of this year, the Anti-Defamation League, or the ADL, in its annual report, found that the number of antisemitic incidents was nearly 60% higher in 2017 than 2016, the largest single-year increase on record, and the second-highest number reported since ADL started tracking incident data in the 1970s. In an opinion piece published in the October 28th edition of the Star Ledger, Jennifer Rubin, who writes for the Washington Post, stated that there is no single source of antisemitism in the United States. It comes from radical leftists bent on destroying the Jewish state and right-wing nationalists who consider Jews to be foreign invaders. Both are increasingly evident on college campuses. To quote the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance's working definition of antisemitism, which was adopted in May of 2016, "Antisemitism is a certain perception of Jews which may be expressed as hatred toward Jews. Rhetorical and physical manifestations of antisemitism are directed toward Jewish or non-Jewish individuals and/or their property, toward Jewish community institutions, and religious facilities. Manifestations might include the targeting of the State of Israel conceived as a Jewish collectivity. However, criticism of Israel similar to that leveled against any other country cannot be regarded as antisemitic. Antisemitism frequently charges Jews with conspiring to harm humanity, and it is often used to blame Jews for 'why things go wrong.' It is expressed in speech, writing, visual forms, and action, and employs sinister stereotypes and negative character traits." On its website, the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance provides contemporary examples of antisemitism in public life, the media, schools, the workplace, and in the religious sphere, which could, taking into account the overall context, include, but is not limited to, limited to, calling for aiding or justifying the killing or harming of Jews in the name of a radical ideology or an extremist view of religion, denying the Jewish people their right to self-determination by claiming that the existence of a State of Israel is a racist endeavor, and making dehumanizing, demonizing, or stereotypical allegations about Jews, such as especially, but not exclusively, the myth about a world Jewish conspiracy, or of Jews controlling the media, economy, government, or other societal institutions. The International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance is clear in its statement that criminal acts are antisemitic when the targets of attacks, whether they are people or property such as buildings, schools, places of worship, and cemeteries, are selected because they are or are perceived to be Jewish or linked to Jews. According to the Anti-Defamation League, in 2017, New Jersey saw a 32% jump in antisemitic incidents, and found that New Jersey ranks third in the country for total number of antisemitic incidents. In Highland Park, we have not been immune to antisemitism. Our residents experienced antisemitic incidents at the end of 2017 and early 2018. In November 2017, a resident found a package full of trash with antisemitic slurs written on it in front of her yard, an incident which was investigated by the Highland Park Police Department. In December 2017, after the United States announced the moving of its embassy to Jerusalem in Israel, one Jewish Highland Park High School student wrote in the student newspaper, The Highland Fling, how she was, quote, "sanoned and shocked by the anti-Zionist and antisemitic propaganda, both in school and throughout the world." Another Jewish Highland Park High School student wrote in The Highland Fling, "In the past few days, the rise of anti-Zionism and antisemitism has been shocking. Even in a place as accepting as Highland Park High School, blatant bigotry and intolerant comments have been made regarding the Jewish people's right to live in their own country. Not only is what's being said historically inaccurate, it's offensive. False claims of apartheid, white supremacy, and even genocide are being made by students who have neither any credibility nor any vested personal interest regarding the Israeli-Palestinian conflict." Then in January 2008, three swastikas were discovered carved into the snow on North Fourth Avenue, an antisemitic incident, which was also investigated by the Highland Park Police Department. Throughout New Jersey in 2018, there have been incidents such as swastikas, profanity, and racial epithets scrawled on a Jewish congressman's campaign sign, and hateful graffiti scrawled onto school property, like what recently happened in Union County. Of course, America's Jewish community just suffered the deadliest attack on Jews in American history in October, with the antisemitic synagogue shooting in Pittsburgh. Across the Hudson River in Manhattan, last Wednesday, November 28th, Elizabeth Medlarsky, a Jewish professor at Columbia University, found her office vandalized with swastikas and a racial epithet. And the NYPD is now searching for suspects, following a series of recent violent attacks against Jews in Brooklyn, including a sucker punch incident from over this past weekend. So we are in a crisis of antisemitism in America today and in New Jersey, and I feel compelled to state that there is no place for antisemitism in Highland Park, in New Jersey, nor in America, and certainly here in Highland Park, which is a fair and welcoming community, we will not tolerate antisemitism. The Jewish holiday of Hanukkah is currently being celebrated by Jews throughout the world. Hanukkah celebrates the victory of a- Hanukkah celebrates the victory of a small group of Jews who around the year 200 BCE triumphed over their Greek oppressors, and the miracle of a little oil kindling the lights of the menorah in the temple in Jerusalem for eight days. Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that." As Jews in Highland Park light three candles on the menorah for the third night of Hanukkah this evening, it is surely with the hope, which was recently expressed by Rabbi Yona Blom of the Chabad at Columbia University, that the glow of the candles in these times of darkness may serve to shine a light on the continuing need to defeat ignorance, intolerance, and hatred. I wish all those who celebrate the Festival of Lights a happy Hanukkah. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Fine, as you know, the Human Relations Commission addresses these issues. Have you taken this to Councilman Hale and the Human Relations Commission?
The, I believe that the incidents in question that I mentioned specifically related to Highland Park were addressed earlier this year prior to Councilman Hale becoming Councilman.
Okay, but if you have an ongoing concern, you should take it to them.
Hundred percent. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Hale, do you have a report today?
I do. I just wanted to echo that one of the things that Councilman Fine mentioned is that Highland Park is a fair and welcoming community, and I think that what I wanted to speak about tonight is some of the people who were instrumental in us passing a resolution a little bit ago about Highland Park being a fair and welcoming community, and that's the members of the Immigration and Refugee Task Force. This is an organization, the leaders of it are John Adler, Tracy Ken-Giango, sorry, Letitia Alameda, Kataldi, Jordan Steiner, Nazreen Rafkeif, and Laurent Reyes, and I wanted to mention those folks in particular because they're the ones who did much of the hard work in updating the fair and welcoming resolution that we passed a while ago. I just wanted to briefly let you know, some of the things that that resolution has done is particularly place some restrictions on monetary assistance and otherwise that the Borough of Highland Park can give to federal authorities in their efforts to deport immigrants, prevents undue questioning of individuals around their immigration status, reaffirms the borough's commitment to nondiscrimination in municipal services, protects the privacy of individuals regarding immigration status, and attempts to ensure that all people new to Highland Park have access to language services and access to all services regardless of immigration status. And in addition to those sort of specific things, I think, again, to reiterate, as Councilman Fine said, that the idea behind this resolution is, again, to be first and foremost to say that Highland Park is fair and welcoming to all folks. This commission was originally started as a response to some of the issues coming out of the federal government, and particularly the Trump administration and the anti-immigrant bashing that had been going on for quite some time. And this commission has taken upon itself, I think, to address many of these issues. The fair and welcoming resolution is certainly one of them. There's another one that they have introduced that will be on tonight, a public charge resolution, and this is in response to an attempt by the Department of Homeland Security to change what can be a disqualifying strike against someone who is attempting to gain citizenship, and that's the access to Medicaid. If you are a resident in the United States and you have access to Medicaid or other public services, the Department of Homeland Security is attempting to say that that is a strike against you for your attempt later on to become a citizen. So in essence, the argument is that if you have received public assistance, that disqualifies you eventually from citizenship. This resolution, this public charge resolution disagrees with that, and very wholeheartedly says that receiving public assistance or being a public charge is not something that will ultimately disqualify you from citizenship. And I think it's an important resolution, and again, this was sponsored by the Immigration and Refugee Task Force and the people that I named. It's another example of things that I think that the council, the mayor, and the volunteers who are working with us as an attempt to bring Highland Park and to show Highland Park as a fair and welcoming resolution, and I wanted to thank them, so.
Thank you. Councilwoman Welkowitz, do you have a report?
I do, thank you. Last week, our Safe Walking and Scythium Committee held our second stakeholder meeting for the creation of our bicycle and pedestrian plan. The meeting was hosted by our consultants, WSP, and paid for through a generous program through the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Over the past several months, WSP has been gathering data by having a presence at our street fair and Earth Day, talking with people. They've also hosted separate public meetings with residents and businesses, and they posted an online survey and interactive map. Thank you for all of the people that have responded to that survey and map. WSP has been analyzing the data, and they're now working to provide us with improvement concepts and recommendations to improve various existing conditions and priority intersections. So more information from them is forthcoming. The rains the past couple of soggy weekends did not deter Highland Park residents and visitors from celebrating Small Business Weekend during the long weekend of Thanksgiving. Our local businesses thrived as shoppers took advantage of the many special sales and unique items available. Did you pick up an HP-made Shop Small tote bag? Stop at a local business to get your complimentary reusable bag. It's also filled with a bunch of coupons and discounts. The Central Jersey Pop-Up Flea Market was back, and will be back again Saturday and Sunday, December 22nd and 23rd. We held our first winter outdoor bazaar with vendors and food trucks, live music at Pinos, and a free screening of Strange Brew at our indoor movie theater. Thanks again to Brian Onkin for that. My favorite was the grand opening of The Cook and the Carpenter Bake Shop, ribbon cutting provided by our mayor, thank you, and all topped off by the lighting of our Christmas tree, caroling, donuts, and a visit from Santa in a fire truck. Many thanks to Highland Park's Fire Department for enriching the experience for the kids and adults alike. It was very interesting. We were standing there, and we were talking amongst ourselves. There were a bunch of little kids there, just giggling with, you know, lining up and giggling with glee to meet Santa and tell him what they wanted for Christmas. There were the parents standing around, there were senior citizens standing around. It was an event for everybody in our community. And happy Hanukkah. This past weekend, we celebrated Hanukkah with our annual menorah lighting. Special thanks to Michael Bieberman of Cyber Night Computers for building our giant menorah and making this happen every year. And we're delighted to welcome back Chamber 43, the comic book store with so much more. Open mic nights start December 17th with music, poetry, spoken word, and other performances. Special thanks to Main Street Director Rebecca Hirsch, who hosted Fayos One Restaurant Hunter New Jersey. She arranged to have them visit Highland Park and film segments at three of our best, our classic White Rose System, Sushiana, and OQ Coffee. The episodes are scheduled to air in January. We'll let you know when that'll be. Please visit the last two Friday farmers markets, where you can buy your tree in Highland Park. This is the first year we're offering that. And I'm going to just leave you with, again, get your complimentary tote bag filled with coupons and discounts, and take advantage of the many ways to support our local businesses throughout this holiday season. Thanks to the dedicated staff and volunteers of Main Street for making our downtown a vibrant and fun place to visit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes. I would just like to add something, based on both reports that we heard from Councilmember Fine and Councilmember Hale. I just saw this afternoon on Facebook, and our NAACP president for New Brunswick and Highland Park Chapter posted something that it was 63 years ago, a woman sat down on the bus because she did not want to, she could not stand up, and her actions were in the moment, but her actions of refusing to surrender her seat and injustice sparked a movement, the Montgomery Bus Boycott. This sister said later that she refused to surrender her seat because she was tired. The sister certainly was tired after a long day's work, but she was really tired of injustice, tired of a lifetime of being a second-class citizen status, tired of being forced, of facing de facto racism, tired of indignity, tired of oppression. And it really goes to what Councilmember Fine says and what we are here in Highland Park. We're tired of seeing all of this, and we want to work to create a better world for all. Rosa Parks was that woman that sat down 63 years ago to today. In Milwaukee, this past weekend, they did an honoring thank you to her for making the change that we have seen that benefit not only me sitting here, but also benefit our Jewish brothers and sisters, and any person that have ever felt or been disenfranchised. A lot of changes happened, and it happened because one woman was tired of injustice. She was just tired of being tired and tired of all the oppressors in our society holding us back, and it just goes to show that if one person could make such a great revolutionary change in our country that spill into other countries, we also here in Highland Park can make that change. And I know, Mayor and council, that's something that we definitely want to do, and we strive to do on a daily basis. It may take time, because the wheels of justice are slow, but we're always working to make changes. That's all I want to say.
Very well.
And to say thank you, Rosa Parks.
Very well said, Councilwoman. Okay, Council President, do you have a report?
Very briefly, Mayor, not to copy too much, let Councilwoman Welkowitz to thank Main Street. We were, it wasn't a ribbon cutting at Chef and the Carpenter, it was a four-foot-long baguette cutting.
And it was delicious.
It was. I got the other half, it was very good. And also, I was pleased to be one of the sponsors for the menorah lighting, along with former Councilwoman Hirsch, Councilman Hale, and John Maron of Main Street, and co-chair of the Arts Commission, serving coffee and donuts in the rain but having a delightful time. Assemblywoman Pinkin also joined us for the lighting of the menorah. Just some updates, then. We met the Middlesex Water Representatives tonight. We've been having several meetings with them, as we promised in the last year, and especially in the last two months, along with the borough administrator, we've been working on concrete plans for reduction, not only in our usage, but in improvements to our system, which will ultimately lead to some reductions in our usage, which hopefully will benefit us. But in the meantime, also, we're looking at an infrastructure system that's over 110 years old and under DEP mandates, is going to be looking at some replacements, so we're also looking at building in capital improvements as well, and we'll be keeping everyone updated. We have a final draft pending state action on a plastic bag ordinance. The mayor has written to the Senate sponsors. We met with Senator Linda Greenstein at her office several weeks ago to go over some of the plans that the state has to determine whether or not there'll be conflicts and preemptions and so on, but we have moved forward, and we're, depending on what the state does, hopefully, we'll be looking at some action in January, but it does depend on what the state is going to do. Some changes need to be made before we can do our final action on that. We also have information that we got from the state with one of the programs for electric vehicles for charging stations. The borough administrator and I are working on obtaining, looking at getting two possible charging stations, one for replacement of some of our fleet with fully-electric vehicles, as well as a publicly-accessible charging station downtown, so we're working on the grants, and also, a lot of the information and possible grants coming forward from manufacturers, as well as the state, are part of the large settlement with Volkswagen over their diesel fraud, from their emissions fraud. Sustainable Highland Park is moving forward with their plans for this year. The theme for Earth Day is people-powered, but in addition, we are also planning for a 50th anniversary, which will be next year, and they're already working on that. Just a reminder, leaf pickup will continue through the end of the year, not like last year where we didn't have leaves falling until late December, but there is no climate change note. This year, the leaves are down a little bit earlier, they're also wetter. We've had extraordinary rain, as the water company indicated, so that leaf pickup has been difficult for all of us, but it will continue at least through the end of the month, and that's all, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
I just have two items tonight. First is a welcome. Since she took the time to come out tonight, we have a new person working in administration alongside me, Emma Missy's first day, so I'm just going to welcome her publicly here. Good to have you. Day one, it's a marathon. She started at eight, and she's still here. So am I. So thanks for coming out. And the other thing, I thought I'd just, Phil, you mentioning the, you mentioned something about the leaves, which reminded me of our Emerald Ash Borer notice that went out in various ways, but I wanted to make sure, if you weren't familiar with the fact, that ash trees are being attacked by what is a lovely beetle called the Emerald Ash Borer, and they're pretty much fatal for these trees. And our Shade Tree Advisory Commission has put out some material on our website, and we would encourage you to look at it, ask for help. We've changed our ordinance so that if you have an ash tree on your property, and you want to remove it, we've waived fees for removal, subject to us inspecting that is in fact an ash tree on your property, but it is something you're going to hear more about in the coming weeks. But I just wanted to make sure, if you hadn't gotten the word yet, that you took the time to go either onto our website, we have flyers by the clerk's counter, and throughout town, but this is something that the borough is looking at for its trees, but what's also equally important are that residents learn how to identify ash trees on their property, and that they take appropriate action, because once they become sick and start to fail, they become increasingly difficult and much more expensive to remove. So we want to get out ahead of that. They also start to break and fall and are dangerous. So we just wanted you, this is something that not just New Jersey's experiencing, it's pretty much, I don't know if it's across the entire state at this point, a country at this point, but I've seen publications in Colorado. This is a devastating bug, invasive bug, and I just want to use a little time to tell people about it.
Thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right, I have a couple of things. First, I want to remind anyone who has not yet enrolled in the Affordable Care Plan for your insurance, the deadline date has been changed and moved closer. You have until December 15th to actually re-enroll for 2019, and if you need more information, please go to GetCoveredNJ.gov. I say this at many of our meetings, but what you don't see, the man behind the camera is Mr. Gary Leslie, who's been heading our HPTV committee now for 20 years?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two? Or is that 40? And many of you, I know, enjoy watching these meetings and other programming that HPTV makes available to all our residents. However, unless we can get people to work with Gary on making this available to us, on doing programming, on running the camera, on doing archiving, this benefit to all of us may go away. So I ask you all, if you have any interest at all in television, in taping, in creativity, in production, please check out our HPTV volunteer information, and I believe, Gary, do you have a meeting coming up for volunteers?
Yeah, next Thursday.
So there will be a meeting on Thursday, December 10th?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth? Thursday, December 13th. If you are interested, please come to the meeting. Is it at the Community Center, Gary, or? Oh, it's downstairs, lower level at Borough Hall. Very, very important in order for us to continue being able to provide you with our HPTV station, with videos of these meetings, the Board of Ed, many other meetings, and also local programming. I want to... I want to thank the Borough Administrator for mentioning the ash bores.
I'll steal your thunder. Sorry.
I just want to let you know, for more detailed information, I did send a letter out to all of you about two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago. And there's, there's a lot more behind this story. It is a real problem for us here in Highland Park. I think there are seventy-five trees that have been identified, and you don't want one of them on your property. If you need more information on this, you can go to the Borough website for, for some additional information. There are also flyers around town, and I believe something's gone up on Facebook as well. Correct, Terry? Just have two more things. First, you know, there was mention at the beginning in some of the reports about the new report on the use of force, the studies that were done on, I believe, four hundred and seventy-four police departments across the state of New Jersey and Highland Park itself. Clearly, the information that was in that report about Highland Park is disturbing, and we will be looking into all of the numbers that went into this. We'll be doing some studying of our own on this. And as the two council members said earlier, if any action needs to be taken, it will be taken. I just want you all to know that not only myself, but the Police Department, the Chief and the Lieutenants, and are, were, were not happy with those reports. And then finally, America lost a real hero this week. President George Bush, the first George Bush, was a man of honor. He did many, many good things for people in this country. No matter what your politics, you may not have agreed with him on everything, but he was an honest and ethical man. And I would like us all to take a moment of silence in his memory right now. Thank you. All right, we're ready for our first segment of public discussion. If anyone has something they would like to say, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address.
My name is Herb Gross, and I live at Adelaide Gardens. I would like everyone in this room, all the council members, and the many, many people watching television, please join me for one minute of silence for our great and beloved late President George Bush. Thank you. For a moment, the American Legion and the veterans of foreign wars, which I am a member, and our veterans of foreign wars, Post 370 in New Brunswick, wish to offer our sincere condolences to President George Bush's family. President Bush was a veteran, and he championed all veterans' affairs. He took care of every veteran, their families from coast to coast, city to city. I had the distinct pleasure of attending one meeting out in Indianapolis, and I listened to President George Bush, and he had the American people first and foremost. He championed all American causes. Many people from the musical field, Whitney Houston, and a few others. The people in the field of entertainment, they enjoyed President Bush and everything he stood for. If I may for one moment, say that the congressmen and the senators from both sides of the aisle had the highest respect for President Bush. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. I think a lot of people don't realize, they know that President Bush was a veteran, but I don't think they realize he was shot down in the Pacific flying a Hellcat on a mission.
Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Ruth Matulski. I live at 109 South Fourth Avenue. And I came here tonight to talk about taxes, but there's one other thing I'm gonna have to address, the council finances. So I was in Santa Fe a couple of weeks ago, and I got an emergency phone call from my husband because he got a letter in the mail saying that there was gonna be a tax sale because we owed five hundred dollars. And it was a little distressing. I hate to admit this, but we did not know what a tax sale was. And all I could picture in my mind was the house of sand and fog, where a woman gets foreclosed and there's murder at the end. It was really distressing. And what was distressing was that, a couple of years ago, you might remember, I sent the mayor a letter, and I said, "I really think it's important to let people know when the taxes are due. We have a house in upstate New York. When the taxes are due, we get a letter." My sister lives in California. She pays way less than I do. Her house is worth twice as much. She gets a letter every time her taxes are due. And this doesn't affect anyone except people who pay their own taxes. And I know there are some people who choose to do that even when they have mortgages, but then there's other people, mostly older people, who don't have mortgages anymore. And what you said to me then, Mayor, was that Highland Park can't send these letters, but you'll send an announcement at the beginning, when you tell us what our estimated tax is, and there'll be some kind of sticker that we can put on our calendar. We've never gotten the stickers, and it doesn't really work because you change calendars in January. And what this really affects is older people, of which I am now one. But there are people who are older than me, and it is really, really distressing to get a letter like the one that we got.
Yeah. So, so, so I want to thank you for bringing that up tonight. I've gotten maybe five or six letters and phone calls about it, and I've asked the Borough Administrator to address the issue. She can probably talk to it better than I can.
Well, yeah, thank you for coming in, and I appreciate, having had this problem like that a number of years ago, I know it's distressing. In our case, the mortgage company hadn't been paying the taxes, so you can only imagine, they had been sitting on our money, so we're particularly particular. So I guess I'd take, I'm gonna slice your, your points into a couple of points. One is, we are, I mean, I'm still relatively new, and we are gonna look at ways we can alert people effectively, but you're absolutely right. One of the challenges we have, and I actually did this, I don't know if it was last year, but I tried doing an email, which I know doesn't get a lot of people, but we did a reminder, and what I ended up doing was freaking out the people who pay their taxes through their mortgage, thinking that they owed taxes when they did it. So I learned that lesson, but I hear what you're saying, and we are gonna look at the schedule to see if we can do, what kinds of things can we do? And we have to get through the end of the year right now, and we will be looking in earnest at what kinds of notifications are affordable, because doing a mailing does cost a lot of money for a small budget like we have, but I don't want to cause distress. So we're gonna look at that. But since you raised the issue, I'll try to speak to some of the, your reactions to what a tax sale is, and just to try to, I'll do my best. I've, I've had a crash course in the last two years myself. But essentially, when you're in a tax sale, and our tax sale date is December twentieth, so if you got one of these notices and you haven't dealt with the problem at this point, you still have time, and up till the nineteenth, if you bring certified funds in and you clear up the issue, you will be withdrawn from that tax sale. So let me just make that very clear. It's not too late to deal with the problem. So that's number one. And number two, what I would say is, even if you go into tax sale, let's say you can't, whatever your situation is, it's a tax sale certificate that is put on your property as a lien, and there are investors out there, there's a whole market out there, people who will buy those, speculating that, you know, that if you fail to pay, they could ultimately foreclose on your property. That's probably, I don't believe they're allowed to pull that trigger for two years. So you still have two years, even if you weren't able to stay out of tax sale. There are fees and things associated with paying back those lien holders, but it's not like your house is sold at tax sale, and the next day, the person, the sheriff's at your house evicting you. So I want to make that, this is an opportunity to explain that. So while I, I hear what you're saying about the notification, I can't really go back in time for this year, we are gonna look for it for next year, I don't want anybody, anybody who got one of those notifications, and I believe there's one more coming out before the tax sale, because the other thing I, we have noticed and we see it, is the USPS unfortunately isn't always our friend. You don't get our notices as timely as we would like, and we don't get your checks as timely as we like, because we are dealing with the time period where we have to deal with certified funds as opposed to personal checks. So if you sent your check in and we got it past the tax sale date, we had to send it back to you because we had already pulled that trigger. So one of the things we're thinking about is, if you're kind of cutting it close for your fourth quarter, and you're not sure, try to bring it in. I know that's an inconvenience, but we can't always trust, unfortunately, or even through your, your online banking, because we're, the way they process it, sometimes they mail a hard check. So these are all things that are challenges in the fourth quarter in particular, because if it's fourth quarter, we have an accelerated schedule where we have to collect everything by the end of the year. So if your delinquency is in your fourth quarter, our number of opportunities to give you that notice is very limited. So those are, I hope I covered some of the territory you raised. And, and I would encourage anybody with questions to reach out to me directly. My contact information's all on the website, as well as if the tax office wasn't able to answer your questions, I'm happy to try to. I think I'm sometimes a good translator, because I'm, I'm kind of learning it alongside of all of you, so I can, I try to translate as best I can. And we are gonna see what we can do in terms of notifications moving forward.
So I really appreciate that. I do have one little comment here. I am a member of a congregation, a Jewish congregation. Five years ago, I had a bat mitzvah. I leave services. I lay in. But unfortunately, by your standards of antisemitism, you would call me an anti-Semite. I spent my junior year in Israel. I am not a Zionist. I believe that everyone in the occupied territories should have a vote. I feel that Israel should annex the occupied territories since they already control them. And it makes me very worried to hear what you had to say, because I know that in New York State, if you support BDS, you are not allowed to have a contract with the state. And it concerns me that the word antisemitism is tossed around a bit too easily. I don't represent a congregation. Most of my congregation disagrees with me, but I don't like feeling in my town that I will be considered an antisemite. I spent my junior year in Israel. I am not a Zionist. I believe that everyone in the occupied territories should have a vote. I feel that Israel should annex the occupied territories since they already control them. And it makes me very worried to hear what you had to say, because I know that in New York State, if you support BDS, you are not allowed to have a contract with the state. And it concerns me that the word antisemitism is tossed around a bit too easily. I don't represent a congregation. Most of my congregation disagrees with me, but I don't like feeling in my town that I will be considered an antisemite. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay, take your time.
Well, I'll be taking my time.
Good.
And you're gonna be here a minute, okay?
Okay.
Because I'm angry.
Okay, you'll have to tell me why.
Well, I'll admit it. First, let me give you my name, and I'm not gonna sit down in two minutes anyway. My name is Conchella Tony Apignani Bonjorani. Talk about discrimination? Oh, my mother had a dress factory during the Kennedy years. She was investigated. Why? Because she was Italian. Okay? So we can understand. I'm eighty years old. I moved into Highland Park as a child in nineteen forty-three. My mother and father brought my four brothers and I here. They bought a home at nine twenty, nine twenty-two Raritan Avenue, a duplex house. Next to that house, there was Freedman Service Trucking that took from Tenth, well, my mother's house was on the corner of Tenth, but to Ninth Avenue. I'm all the way back where now there is apartments. Anyway, in that house, my mother and father brought my four brothers, my grandfather and myself. Three of my brothers served this country. My oldest brother Larry, when he got out of Highland Park High School, he was in World War II. He served in France, and he served in Belgium. My other brother Ted, he served in Germany after the war to reconstruct, help the American forces reconstruct. My brother Mike, he was lucky, he stayed safe, stayed solid. Of course, at that time, my mother was not too happy with anybody. So from nineteen forty-three, we've been paying taxes in this town. In nineteen fifty-nine, my husband and I got married, and we bought a house on Central Avenue in the Triangle, because I liked the Triangle, because that was my people. In these fifty-eight, in February first, it'll be fifty-nine years, I was never late in taxes. Needless to say, in November, I forgot to pay the taxes, and I got the check out on the ninth of November. However, Armistice Day came along. Now, to you young people, it's Veterans Day. To me, it's Armistice Day. Okay? Eleven, 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 okay? So I get this letter, tax sale. Fifty-eight years I'm paying taxes in this town, high taxes, and then they send me a bill for almost eighty dollars. Now, I also bought, nineteen years ago, without my husband's knowledge, I bought a house on the shore. He didn't talk to me for the month, the best month of my fifty-eight years of marriage. It was the happiest month of my life, but anyway. Don't laugh, Terry, you know him. I, I'm so angry that I can't get it, and you know, I tried to make an appointment with you, and I did meet with this lady.
Terry, and I was supposed to pass along your phone number to the mayor, and I neglected to do so, so I will apologize.
And nobody came to see. Nobody cares about the Triangle. Anyway, my husband and I bought the house, moved in, and I've been there, raised my three children there, still there, only because of my husband, because I would move down the shore at the drop of a hat. I'd get out of this town. I have a house down the shore, worth three times more than this house. I pay nine thousand dollars a year taxes. This house, I pay twelve thousand dollars a year taxes, and a Cape Cod, which is fifty-nine or sixty years old. Figure that one out, okay? So, okay. She was president of the school right then. You know, I had to keep notes because I'm old, what can I tell you? So anyway, I got this tax, you know, very upset guy, because down the shore, I was late to, they charged me twelve dollars and ninety-five cents. Highland Park, seventy dollars. I still don't understand why that other fifty dollars is in there. I don't get it. I, I don't know, is that from the state? Because if it's from the state...
Did, did you have a chance to talk to the tax office about it?
Oh, that question, I don't know. I talked to her, Terry. I'm sorry, Terry. So anyway, I'm here because I want to know a couple of questions. I would like to know approximately, I'm sorry, what have we paid in attorney fees to fight for Bucksworth?
Well, it's, it's, I don't know the number offhand right now, but it's, it's a complicated... question because it's, there's several litigations involved in it. I don't know, borough attorney?
I have no number. The litigation goes back to 2009, so I, but I have no idea.
What I'm asking, okay, because number one, see, I've been here for too many years. Does anybody here know where Twin Brooks is?
Yeah.
Okay. That was a garbage dump for Highland Park, you know that, right? Oh, when she went, that brook on East Avenue, North East Avenue, all the way down to the railroad track, my brothers and I, they used to go down there and shoot rats bigger than this. Then when they filled that up, they came over here. This building, the school, the police department, everything is on the old Highland Park dump, including Buckwoods, okay? I don't want to pay for Buckwoods. I don't want my taxes to go for that. How can I avoid that? Can you answer that for me, mayor?
So I don't want to pay for it either, but we're forced to do that. When litigation is brought against us, we have to defend ourselves.
Well, who started the litigation? Was it started by the owners or was it started by Highland Park?
We don't own Buckwoods.
No, we don't own Buckwoods. Litigation was started by the owner of Buckwoods against the borough.
And for reasons of?
They were unhappy that they couldn't develop on the property what they wanted to develop.
What did they want to develop?
Well, many years ago, there was Gabriel Estates, which was denied by our planning board before I got here, and then now they'd like to develop 75 units over there.
Well, they developed it on the Walden property, didn't they? They're developing the Walden property, aren't they? Well, I don't know, I know, I was listening, I was watching the media there. One of the gentlemen who lives on South Fifth Avenue said they were very concerned if the trees are cut, that the property is going to slow down. I don't want to fix his property. I have enough fixing my own. There's a retaining law. I don't care what they build over there.
So, so let me, let me, let me address a couple of other things that you said without the specifics on, you know, Buckwoods or any other property. Highland Park, many years ago, lost a lot of their industry. And, and that industry, or ratables, helped all of us who have properties here in Highland Park. It helped to, to keep, we could spread the taxes, you know, more between the industry and the private homes. Right now, there basically is no, there are no ratables to speak of in Highland Park. That's part of the issue that we face with, with our taxes. The other part, so one of the things that we have been talking about is what we call smart downtown development, because that in itself would help us with ratables, and, and all of us. So what, what you're feeling, the difference between what you're paying in, down by the shore versus what you're paying here, may have something to do with the mix of ratables within your town, but...
Not really, but anyway.
So, so they...
You're going to buy property, you're going to put money out to buy property on Raritan Avenue, is that what I understand? You're having a meeting next week?
There, there are plans that have been in existence for, through our master plan for the redevelopment of the downtown.
And where is that going to be located? What property are you looking to purchase?
Oh, so we will... I think they're referring, she might be referring to the planning board hearing next week regarding the...
I'm sorry.
I think you might have gotten the planning board notice, maybe?
I guess so, they're talking...
Well, there's, because there's a couple of different things going on, that's why I was trying to come up with.
All I know is it was stated that they're going to be meeting to discuss revenues available to purchase property on the avenue. You're talking about ratables. Okay, where the Senegal convent was, that was a non-taxable item. And now there are a lot of condos or townhouses up there. You know what I'm talking about, right? Okay? And also now, where the castle, I understand they're putting ratables there. Where the Walden property, they put ratables there, a lot of new houses and big houses, a lot of...
You're talking about where the wallpaper company was?
Wallpaper company in...
Cleveland Avenue.
Cleveland, yeah.
John Walden was down on River Road, right by the railroad tracks. On Cleveland Avenue...
Cleveland, 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 yes.
Walden, and then there was Ross and the street.
Right, right. And Ross and all that.
I graduated Highland Park High School in 1955.
So, so I don't, I know you have a lot more you want to say. We have another public comment session that you can finish up on, but I'm required by our ordinances, I've gone over what I'm allowed to keep each individual...
Well, I'm just going to tell you one thing.
Go ahead.
I don't think that the older people in this town, who have been here for a long period of time, should be treated so rudely. Not being called by you, not being, well, I left the message.
Okay, if any message that I get, I always return calls. You can ask, you can ask...
All story's true, you can't fight city law.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way, but every message I get, I do return.
A lot of you people would know my husband because he used to have the...
Okay. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, let's move on. Clerk, can you report on the introduction of boards, committees, commissions, ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
In ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, Middlesex County incorporating into chapter nine of the code, various boards, committees and commissions in lieu of reconstituting said boards, committees and commissions annually by resolution, has been introduced in writing by the council as a whole for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Also move.
Second.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I'd just like to note for the public that this not only gathers all of the boards and commissions that we formed over time, but it places them in uniform organization, lays out the organization, so we are consolidating them into one ordinance that doesn't create new, except for the bias commission, but it ties them all together with the proper format. I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, clerk, would you report on introduction of property acquisition ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
In ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park in Middlesex County authorizing pursuant to NJSA 40A:12-3, the acquisition of block 173, lots 41 and 49, and block 89, lot 13, in the Borough, on the Borough of Highland Park tax map, and appropriating the sum not to exceed $3.5 million for said acquisitions, has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, can you please report on introduction of 31 River Road redevelopment plan for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Ordinance of the Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, authorizing the adoption of a redevelopment plan for the property 31 River Road redevelopment area pursuant, pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, can you please report on introduction of water and sewer ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park, chapter 3, 28, sewer and water, has been introduced in writing by the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Just for the public's information, this ordinance would simply amend some of the water rates breakdown based upon large users. It was recommended by Middlesex Water as part of our ongoing project to, to make our, our water usage more in line with, with the actual use versus the delivery. So this is a fine tuning adjustment they recommended some time ago. I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, on the consent agenda, may I have a motion to adopt item numbers 14 through Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other public discussion? Please step up to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is George Hebble, I live at...
Can, can you move it? Yeah, you can take it off.
You can take it off.
Take it off, it's easier.
Hi, good evening. I'm George Hebble, I live at 115 Banner. And just a point of curiosity, I've always wondered what becomes of the leaves that are picked up?
What becomes of the...
What is done with the leaves?
Okay.
We do take them to a place where they get, I believe, composted or recycled. It's separate from, they don't just put them in the garbage.
It's not here in town, it's separate.
No, it's, I believe it's at the county facility in East Front Licker, where Edge Borough, but I'm pretty sure. But I know, it's very important to me that they don't just go in the garbage.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Matthew Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue. Just a couple of things, I wanted to thank Councilman Fine for his remarks before. I think, and it just uptailed with what Councilman Hale mentioned about the fair and welcoming resolution, which was initially the inclusive communities resolution. I just wanted to give a little history about the, about that resolution and its, and its, you know, and its nucleus. It was, you know, we started discussing, we started discussing, you know, looking at for immigrants following our president's election, but prior to his taking office. So there wasn't an idea of what the policies would look like. But I think to Councilman Fine's point was that that resolution was, was written broadly as a framework, as a policy framework. And the reason why it was called inclusive communities and not fair and welcoming, which is the, which is the term of art or the, 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 the term of art in the movement, was because, well, inclusive communities is actually a nod toward HUD programs that fight disparate impact. So it denotes equitable treatment across the board. And equity, obviously, is different from equal. Equity, you know, is, denotes that some people may need additional support to arrive at the same level. So that's where the inclusive community concept came from. And to Councilman Fine's point, I appreciated what, what you said, because I think, I think the council heard a lot of, you know, why is this, why is this written broadly? And it's because you never know who's going to be in power, you never know who's going to be targeted, and you never know what policies are going to come down and affect our, and affect our communities. So in that respect, I appreciate Councilman Fine's words. I had a question about the water, and I wish, I wish they were still here. I think the main concern was not necessarily the fact that the water's flowing, but if it's, it's at a cost to the borough. Was that, was that addressed? Are we, are we paying for those flushings?
Good. It's kind of, it's a, it's a yes and a no. I mean, we have a, the best I can explain it for you. We have, the state have, through various other processes, establishes a minimum purchase of water for the borough on a daily basis, and they have some calculus that they use because they have to assume like, almost like your worst day. So there's a lot of days where we are buying water we don't use. So on days where consumption's down and we're flushing hydrants, probably not. But there might be days where consumption's high and we have to flush, and then there'll be an extra charge on our bill. So I've been actually trying to look at, to see what the impacts over, using the last year, just as a, since we're at the end of one year, to go back and look at what the flushing, we can kind of tell when it's the flushing because of the days. We know when we flush, so I can look at each, because the meters for, for Middlesex Water give us every day what, from, from their meters, what we've been using, so it's pretty accurate. So I can kind of go back. So it's a yes and a no, because we have a minimum we have to, that's established. Does our flushing requirements affect our minimum? Maybe it's a piece of that. So we're looking at that, because eventually we want to approach, once we have our facts straight, approach the state and say, hey, most of the days, we're having to buy water we don't necessarily need. What can we do? But we need to be, we need to walk into that meeting with good information. And we have a lot of other, as you know from Councilman George's presentations over the last year, we have a lot of issues in, in our infrastructure, so we don't want to overstate this problem and then find they're going to ping us on 50 other things. So we're kind of doing a dance there. So it's a yes and a no, because to the extent that we are purchasing water for flushing over our minimum, that would affect, I don't get a sense that that's a huge number. And that's what I'm going to try to tally, because of course, I have to convert everything into gallons and dollars, but that's all budgeted for in our utility and has to be built into the rate, if you think of it that way.
And Councilman George is going to address that, too?
Just briefly, first of all, Mr. Hirsch, thank you for mentioning the original incipient resolution, which you and I worked quite diligently and had several arguments about.
We did, but we agree, and, and I do, and just for the, I do miss the title. Fair and welcoming is, is broad, and I thought inclusive communities was, but you know, I'm not up there, so.
I was frankly, as you know, at times in favor of just calling it sanctuary city and putting it out there as to who we are. And you've heard me say a number of times that, I've spoken with Councilman Hale about this as well, because I, I miss our debates, which would, by the way, we still have, that what, putting aside the, the involvement of most of our community in these issues rather than ignoring it, putting aside the fact that the insult to the American public, which occurred in November of 2016, and has divided us even more as an incipient issue, and putting aside the study of bias, and I've also mentioned that it's prejudice as well, I addressed the LGBTQ community after the Orlando shooting and said, one of the ways that, that we start to break down these barriers and be who we are, and we don't have to be buddy-buddy with everybody. We have to accept everyone. Tolerance is not enough. Acceptance is the only goal. But we need to put down our phones, get off our computers, stop all the fancy stuff, and just turn to the person next to us at OQ and say, hey, what's up? How you doing? That's how, that's the only thing that really works, ultimately. To address your water question, as Terry said, we pay a minimum bill, which is set by the state in, with Middlesex Water. They set goals, and it's based upon emergency use. You heard them address the ozone filtering system, there's also, I believe there's an ultraviolet component to that as well. That's part and parcel of their plan to eliminate flushing eventually. But the flushing is part of the volume that they charge us with, and it's built in as an assumption that it has to be done, and they use an averaging based upon weather events. As they said, it's really, the flushing is, is a result of biological influence into it, so that is built into the race. So yes, to the extent that, you know, going back and looking at those calculations, which I think is a three-year calculation, meaning that it is for a set period of three years, it's built into that. We don't, I, I don't believe it's been so extraordinary that there are formulas for a daily use, which keys in an extra charge, and an annual use, which keys over a certain excess, keys in a charge. And I don't believe we've hit either of them. And I don't believe we've hit either of those this year. But to Middlesex Water's credit, in working with us almost on a monthly basis with regard to ongoing projects and in the mud projects as well, they put in a plan to DEP to reduce that based upon what our demonstrated use has been over the last five years, I believe. And also the filtration plan, hopefully by 2021, will eliminate flushing, which would be a second piece to roll into the reduction application. I think it's a rather long document, but I read it because it's important, and I believe that they've rolled in the filtration into that as saying, here's one of the things we're doing to reduce that maximum.
Just one thing also on the flushing, Matt and anybody else, the flushing, the need to flush for those components of the water has always existed for us. However, as they mentioned, this year, and, and also last year, there were, the amount of rain that we received here in New Jersey caused us to have to flush the hydrants more often. So it's an indication also of possible climate change that will affect us going forward as well. And thankfully, as, as the council president and Borough Administrator said, by 2021, when they put this new system in, hopefully that will do away with the need for the flushing. Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session on property acquisition, litigation and affordable housing?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
What is the action if we take an executive session?
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
I thank everybody. The Borough Attorney indicates no action will be taken after the executive session.
Thank you.